Welcome to today's city council meeting today, Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty five. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
President.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Present.
District three, Councilmember Otero.
Present.
District four, Vice Mayor Martinez.
Present.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand up for the invocation by Pastor Jerry Swain, followed by the pledge of allegiance. He is in person today.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this time. We thank you for these leaders. We ask you right now to give these leaders' vision, give them direction, Lord. Lead and guide this meeting tonight. Let all decisions be made with you in mind. Heavenly Father, we ask you right now, in Jesus' wonderful name, amen.
We'll go ahead and start with citizens' communications. While the city welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt the rules allowing no more than five minutes, Resolution two thousand and seven one oh six, for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are outside. I do have a yellow card by Catherine. Yes. So you're right, you didn't put a specific agenda item, but you have a general citizen's comment checked off. Did I pronounce that correctly? Make sure that I can hear you. Please introduce yourself. Yes. Welcome.
I just wanted to know if we're gonna do something about carports and things that are in the driveways? Are you gonna try to do something about all the cars that are being parked on the on the grass and on the lawns all around? It looks really trashy also. In my area, there's a lot of it going on.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name for the record? Ma'am, can you please state your name for the record?
Catherine Reeves.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no more yellow cards. Anybody else wishing to speak, please walk up to the state, to the podium?
Good evening, council, staff, and all people present here tonight. I am Milt Treeweiler. I was born in Stanislas County and I've lived here all my life. We have a serious problem here in Stanislas County that we need to acknowledge and face and address. It's hard to understand, but there are people here in Stanislas County who are scheming to destroy the future for our children and our descendants. They plan to build more houses to bring in Bay Area people to live in Stanislas County. This farmland in the MID and TID irrigation districts of Stanislas County is the best farmland in the world. Once you build houses on this farmland, you will never be able to grow food on it again. This would be irresponsible and our children and descendants would have to suffer for the bad decisions we would be making today. We're educated people. We don't need to make bad decisions. There's not one acre of farmland in the entire, in some entire states and even countries as good as a farmland in the proposed Riverwalk project near Riverbank, or as the farmland in the area north of Turlock, or as the farmland in the areas around Modesto, Series, Houston, and Salida. Stanislas County's farmland can grow food for hundreds of years because we have the best soil in the world, we have all the water we need for several hundred years, and we have the climate right here, a Mediterranean climate in our county. Total US farmland is steadily declining as farms become subdivisions. The combination of population growth and farmland loss due to the fallowing of land in the San Joaquin Valley has resulted in an alarming decline in the amount of farmland in the Central Valley. We're going to have to follow another nine hundred thousand acres between here and Baker's Field because there is not enough water in the aquifer to irrigate it. I don't think people know how good our farmland is. In the entire country of Japan, they can only grow thirty-eight percent of the food they need to eat. They have to import sixty-two percent of their food to survive. There is an abundance of poor soils in the wastelands in California for the developers to build houses on. We have plenty of poor soils that are no good for farming right here, even in our area in Stanislas County, like the Altamont Pass area or the area east of Oakdale. There's also the large land mass area west of Patterson along I five. And we already have, there's permission to build five thousand houses there, and that's a perfect place for it. That land is worthless compared to the land here around Series, Turlock, Modesto. There's also a large land mass in the Fairfield area along Highway twelve. We are not a bedroom community for the Bay Area. We are the breadbasket for our country. We must be good stewards and conservationists for our children and descendants since they cannot do it for themselves. We have to take care of our children. We have to think about this. We have to work on this. And now is the time to save our farmlands. Look at what our ancestors did for us. Our TID and MID ancestors had great foresight when they formed the first irrigation district in the state of California, first one in eighteen eighty-seven. That's a hundred and thirty-eight years ago. When the Grange Dam was completed in eighteen ninety-three, it was the highest overflow dam in the United States. It was built at a cost of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The dam had one purpose, to divert the Cholome River water into Turlock and Modesto irrigation districts. This is something that we have to do. We are the responsible people. We have to be responsible people. And I know you're annexing land on the west side. You need to kind of just slow that down. We can build up. We can build four, five-story buildings. We can do that. Right here in Stanislas County, there isn't anything stopping us from doing that. But why would we want to hurt our children and our descendants? I seriously ask you to think about this and start working on it. Grow up and not out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience?
Good evening, staff. John Warren, City of Series. I've spoken and had several people ask me a question about receiving notifications for city meetings and city events. And most recently, with this particular meeting, I didn't receive a notice or the staff report buttons that you can click on. So I was wondering with the new city website, if something happened to that process? I'm still on the old website and received no notifications through that, but the new website did not notify me of this meeting or any new bids or anything like that that you can sign up for. You can go online and sign up for those notifications. And I've had several people ask me about that. And so I was curious as to if that's something that the John might be able to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person? See you none. Anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom and there were no emails received.
Okay, the public comment period is now closed. Any conflicts of interest from council? Okay, moving on to consent calendar. All consent matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff be accepted and acted by a roll call vote. Is there anyone who would like to pull any items on the agenda? I see Councilmember Vera.
Yes, I would like to pull item five, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Number seven.
Members of the audience? See you none. Bring this item back for a motion.
Make a motion to approve items one through four, six, and eight of the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Start off with item number five.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question because I noticed on page thirty of the agenda on item five, there were some Union Pacific, let me just pull up my notes really quick, Union Pacific invoices dating back to two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, and two thousand and twenty-four that were listed as being paid now, and I was just inquiring why and how did that affect our budget as well, since these should have been itemized in prior budgets, I'm guessing? So I just wanted to get clarification on the Union Pacific payments.
Thank you for your question, Councilmember. So those, those invoices, obviously, some of them are from twenty-two, twenty-three. They, for some reason, were not paid. However, when we look at budgets, they are already accounted for within the Measure L regional budgets that we have been paying for the service and Mitchell interchange out of. So as far as affecting the budget, no, it hasn't affected the budget as far as the project is concerned.
And then we just didn't get them? Is that why? I just want to make sure there was no.
I wish I had a better explanation for you. Unfortunately, it was before my time. You know, the charges were legitimate charges of Union Pacific reviewing plans, specifications, and going over the project with city staff. But other than that, I don't have a better explanation for that.
Thank you.
Any members of the public would like to make a comment on item number five? See you none. Bring this item back for motion.
Make a motion to approve item five.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number seven, Councilmember Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My objection to this item is that first off, Tyler knows I have a tough time filling out this form, so but that comes with the job. But, but the item is already submitting the cost for our current budget coming up that we all need to approve. And since we haven't had a successful reportable audit on previous physical financial activities, I don't think it's appropriate for us to go ahead and budget anything in the new financial year. It's forty-five hundred dollars, but still, we're not positive of our financial status, at least as a councilperson. I haven't seen the audit and I'm not aware of it being completed yet. That's my primary objection for this item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Who's gonna answer that question?
I'm sorry, was there a question? Or was it more of a statement?
Well, I'll follow up. So there's, there's three accounts on there that were mentioned. What are those accounts and what's, what's in those accounts and how, how is this going to be paid for?
So for this, for this upcoming fiscal year and every fiscal year thereafter, for the five-year agreement, it would be coming out of contract services.
So the one, two, three, four, contract for these right here are account numbers?
Correct.
Those are account numbers?
Hmm.
This is an item that would be budgeted in the future budget?
So there's money already budgeted, there's monies that are left over that we can put towards this in the current budget for this first, for the first year of the agreement, which would be July first through June thirtieth. This upcoming July first through June thirtieth of twenty-six. And then thereafter, we would budget the forty-five hundred for each year thereafter in contract services.
I just wanted, okay, go ahead.
Sure, follow up on that is that you know, it's, it's under contract services and I'm not sure if the general public's aware of, and I'm not positive that I brought it up before, but fourteen point eight percent of our budget is under contract services. It's, it's a bunch, it's a number that's bundled together with all kinds of different activities, and apparently this would be one of them. And that's another reason, I mean, it's forty-five hundred dollars is to some a lot, to some not very much, and of course, the total amount of our budget is not much. But still, yet, we haven't had a complete audit of our previous financial years. So I'm just against going forward. I'll take the first six months free, that's fine. And I don't want to make a commitment to spend money that we may not have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now I have Councilmember Rosalind, did you push a button again?
Yes, I did. Thank you. I was just wondering, this forty-five hundred, how many people does that impact? Because I know there's paper seven hundreds that I have to send in myself, and it's not overly difficult to just print it and mail it in. So that's what I'm just wondering, are we spending forty-five hundred for three people to when it can just be mailed with a stamp?
So this program for council for electeds, what's called eighty-seven two hundred filers for electeds, you guys are required to file your Form seven hundreds directly on the FPPC's website. That was effective January first of this year. But this program allows everyone in the city to file their Form seven hundreds electronically. There's a handful of positions within the city that are required to file their Form seven hundreds each year to the city clerk's office as opposed to directly to the FPPC. This program also allows for the AB one, two, three, four, the ethics training that is required every, I believe, two years to be completed through this program. It also allows during election years and even outside of election years, all campaign statements to be filed electronically as opposed to filing paper through the city clerk's office.
So this will affect more than just the handful of people that have to file the paper form?
Yes, I couldn't put a number to it. I believe there's about thirty staff members that have to file their Form seven hundred. So there's that amount for Form seven hundred, and then campaign statements are at least twice a year, sometimes more often than that. And then during election, there's, election years, there's a handful of campaign statements that are required throughout the election season, both by the electeds as well as the candidates that are running.
And the committees as well. And do we know, going back to what Casey's concern is, where we are with the budget and the audit, just so we, we again, can confirm that the money is still correctly going to be allocated and available to use for something that obviously would be needed, but do we have the money to actually appropriate for it?
I can at least answer for the money for this program. There is adequate funds in the contract services and the accounts that are listed for this program. And as far as where we're at with the audit, I would have to defer to the city manager.
So as you know, audit's ongoing right now, and so they're working on that, and we're anticipating it coming back to the council, hopefully in April or May. And we'll be coming to the council in closed session on the twenty-fourth to open up negotiations and give an overview of where we stand financially to move forward with that.
And do we, and I don't know where Avenue has come in when it comes to revenue. Is our revenue maintaining? Or do we look, are we looking at possible adjustments in our budget for the next, with this contract, I believe, for four or five years? How do we look, do we look like we're going to be financially stable to be able to handle that impact to our budget over the long term of this contract?
So will we know all the, the numbers coming in from Avenue for, to decide that? That's gonna be coming in before the twenty-fourth, so we can project that and then present that to the council in closed session.
And would it be possible, and I don't know where everyone else is going, just just judging based on where Casey and I are kind of, I think our brain is at. Is it possible to even have those numbers before we do a vote? Because I don't necessarily want to say no at this time, but when I don't have the, the numbers to guarantee that we're going to be able to maintain the contract long term? I don't know if I'm comfortable on voting on something without knowing that we're going to be financially okay long term, unless there's an out in the contract that allows us to get out in the event that we don't have the budget, like some of the contracts do allow us.
The whole scheme of things, so forty-five hundred dollars out of our budget, each department has their own contract services and forty-five hundred is for lack of better terms, very miniscule as far as cost. I think we're gonna have no problem with paying net funds. We'd have to look at the bigger contracts we're going out after to see if we have to put those back, change those or adapt those or anything, but the forty-five hundred is not gonna impact us.
I had Councilmember Martinez press your button before Councilmember Otero.
My question was answered. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it was? Okay. Councilmember?
So with this, I'm all for moving for electronic filing and all of that, but in hearing the other council members, it does bring some concerns for the budget that's coming up. Is there any way that we could hold this item until, you know, in a couple months, we revisit it once we look at the budget? Or does it something that you're working on now? It's?
We can go ahead, we can go ahead and pull it and bring it back next month after you have more information on the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
A motion to pull item.
I'll second that.
We go to roll call, please.
The motion is to deny the item, correct?
And to pull it for future.
Okay. For future meeting. And who first?
I did it and then she seconded it, yes.
Perfect.
If I may interrupt very briefly, I don't recall if we had public comment on this.
Oh, point of order. Members of the public. Thank you. We had a lengthy conversation.
Get your attention on that matter. I'm John Warren, City of Series.
Go ahead.
Not a lot of dollars for this particular item, but then again, when you add up all the small amounts that the city spends to operate every year, every month, and every day, it can be a large amount. Filing that Form seven hundred is part of the job when you folks come to work. If you get hired in the clerk's office to do something, filling out that seven hundred form is part of your job. That's part of being hired for that position. And you should be aware of that when you apply for the job and know that you're going to be required to do that. So I think there are some things that public servants have to do because they want to be public servants, and part of it's filling out this silly form to make the state happy. So if you want the position and you want to do the job, please fill out the form and save the city forty-five hundred dollars this year, and two years from now, it'll be ten thousand dollars when that budget goes up and we don't have the things to fill for it. It's, it's a simple thing. It's part of your job, fill it out, and life goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anybody else? Okay. Item, excuse me, anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom and there were no emails received.
Okay. Did she stop us before the vote? Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Just to clarify, this is to table it?
Yes, table.
Correct, to table it.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Let's see, moving on to council member referrals. First item, strategic plan update requested by Councilmember Otero at the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting. And she will introduce the referral.
So in looking at our website, I noticed that the strategic plan was last revised March twenty-third, twenty twenty. It was noted that the new update, the newer updated plan would be considered in early twenty twenty-one, but unfortunately, that hasn't happened. So it's time that we do get this updated to outline our roadmap. All of our, the long-term goals for the city are critical, and with this plan, it's going to help us with our priorities, the decision-making, and ensure that there's accountability with various projects and other parts of the city that we're moving forward. We do need to ensure that we also have a shared vision. Not just between the council and city staff, but also with the residents who live here. This plan's going to give us direction and allow us to be efficient in our resources. Like I mentioned, with accountability and also transparency, we are going to need clear timelines and I feel conduct regular updates on the progress so that way the public does know what's going on. As we begin updating the plan, I would like to see some public involvement by either doing some, maybe some surveys, having a workshop, all of us on the council getting out and talking to the residents in our district. Because again, we've got to share that vision as a community, and that's going to be listed right there in that strategic plan. Thank you.
Open this up to the public. Members of the public would like to make any comments on this item? See you none. Anyone online?
There are no hands raised and there were no emails received.
Now I'm looking for consensus from the council, from the left. Yes. Yes, yes, and yes. Thank you very much. Item number ten. To create a committee to review the Modesto fire contract. This was requested by Councilmember Casey at the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting. Councilmember, you will introduce the referral.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't remember the exact date that we approved this contract. I just remember I was in the back of the room and it was like eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock and thirty at night. And the number of people that were part of the public was very small. One of the items that was brought up more than once was the importance of having a paramedic on the fire truck so that the first responders could be prepared. In my neighborhood, and my, my aunt and uncle live on Wallen, which is not in the city, but still part of the fire protection district. The first responders have always have been, since this contract went into place, the AMR ambulance company. I want to preface this, my comments, that I support the need for qualified firefighters to serve the city of Series. This five-year inspection, I mean, five-year contract is up this year, and here it already is March, this first quarter of the year, and it's not up this year? No, it's up for renewal, isn't it? Well, I'm sound corrected. That's even more of a reason to have the public input. Those of us that look at the voucher every month, you can see that this month of January, because it's always money already spent. The fee was six hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents. One time at one of our meetings, I asked the question, is this all general fund? And the answer was, yes, it is, but in fact, sixty percent comes from general fund and forty percent comes from Measure H money. When this contract was approved, it was approved by the council to go forward with it, and then it was left in the hands of the then city manager to actually choose one of the five different choices. And at the time, our city attorney and the city manager, they both agreed that the money could come from Measure H. I'm not sure that during the presentation, again, I was here as a citizen. It was so late at night, I may not have been paying as much of attention as I should have, but I'm not sure that it was represented that to the general public. So I think it's important, as I mentioned before about many other issues, that this is a huge thing, that's very important that we have fire protection. Shortly after the contract was signed, maybe within the six months, the whole fire department, if I remember correctly, and if the Modesto B at that time was a five-day, five-day-a-week paper, the entire fire department got a two percent raise. Maybe they were able to do that because we we were paying so much money toward it. Bottom line is, this is a lot of money. And I think that the general public needs to have the opportunity to participate in the decision of this much money. Now whether they show up or not, that's on them. But let's give them an opportunity to get involved. I know that you've already appointed two people beyond the committee. And I think it's just important that we not, since it's not going to renew until, I guess, September, August of 2026, whenever. It's not too soon to start, at least looking into it. Maybe the possibility of having another agency provide, maybe there's a possibility, we look at this money, maybe we can keep our own firefighters. There's all kinds of different choices in that. I just think it's important that the general public, the taxpayers, the people that pay that $663,780.46 could have a say on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Open this item up to the public. Any members of the public would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none. Bring this back to council for consent. Do you have a comment? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, towards the end of the year, we will be reviewing this contract anyways, right? Because it's up for review next year. A little bit beforehand, we'll have a review of it, correct?
We're actually starting review of that contract next month.
Okay, so we already are in the process of doing that. So then it wouldn't, okay. I just want to make sure that we don't waste, you know, staff time and man hours doing it twice, is why I ask. And then, Mr. Casey, you said you wanted to do a committee. Could you elaborate more on what exactly you're looking for? You want citizen input as well? So would it be an advisory committee with city people and two council members? I'm assuming you mean the two council members that are on the fire advisory committee already?
Well, thank you, Councilman. The important part of my question or my request is that the public be involved. Give them, since you're going to start next month, give them the opportunity to know that you're going to start next month and give them the opportunity to participate and maybe come up with some ideas and ask some questions. I'm not necessarily suggesting that you point Mr. Warren to be on the committee. I'm just saying that it needs to be a public affair. When we made this decision, when our city council made this decision, there were fewer people in the audience, if I recall correctly, than there are today. And that was a huge financial decision. I'm just, I'm suggesting, as I've done before about other items, ask the public to get involved. The city manager just now mentioned to you that we're going to start next month. Well, I didn't know that. Did you know that? And I'm on the council, so I didn't know that. And I'm a citizen of Series. I think it's important that the people have an opportunity to know what's going on. And this is a big ticket item. And I'm not sure that when this was approved, if the mayor, who was the only person left on the council that was there, I'm not sure if he would have said, well, and we're going to fund this with Measure H money. I'm not sure it would have passed that, you know, so easily. But anyway, I'm not suggesting that you add people to the committee. I think you're on, you and the mayor are the force on this, and that's fine. I'm just suggesting that please involve other citizens in the process. That's it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember, if I may, sir, your request item is to create a committee to review it. That's what your item on the agenda is, is to create a committee. I just ask if you could elaborate exactly what style of committee you want, or if you just want it to be reviewed, perhaps we should just wait until staff brings us the presentation.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'm reminded oftentimes that my communication skills aren't the best in the world. I'm suggesting that you have public input. And if it's going to require adding people to the committee, then so be it. How are you going to do it? I don't know. All I do, all I do know absolutely positively that the majority of the citizens of Series have no idea what we're paying for. I'm sure that the citizens of Series have no idea about what goes on at the station on Service Road that we fund. And we have other agencies there and the money part of it coming back and forth. I just think that we need to open it up to the public. However, you and the mayor want to do it with the staff, the public needs to go. This is a huge amount of money. And again, I'll go back to the Measure H. The Measure H funds, the people that voted on it and proved it, thought it was for something. They had no idea that 40% of the money was going to be spent to have the Modesto Fire Department provide fire service. I just, I think it's important. That's, I don't know how to do it. And yeah, you're right. And that's what it says, a committee. Well, the committees, these 25 people out there, how about that? Have those 25 people be on the committee. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. Thank you, both mayor and Councilman Daniel A. Martinez.
Okay, so I have Rosalinda, councilmember. You had pressed your button.
Thank you. I just want to confirm, I'm assuming this is going to be with Doug. Does the contract usually come to council, not just closed door, correct? And doesn't it have to be approved out of public forum or presentation and everything?
Yeah, there'll be a presentation to the council about the contract, and that'll be brought to the council hopefully in May of 2026.
And the public's allowed to make comments and ask questions at that time as well. And if they see something that needs to be adjusted or changed, and then this would be also put online, so that way they can see it in the council packet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilmember Otero?
And just to follow up to Councilwoman Vera's question. So when it comes, when the presentation comes to the council next year, at that time is when we're going to be voting as well, right, for that contract?
Well, we're going to bring it in May, just in case you want to tweak the contract, you want to make any changes. We still have time to make those changes and bring it back to you for June.
Okay. So I know the recommendation here, the referral, it says committee. But what I'm kind of thinking along the lines of a committee is having some sort of special meeting way ahead of time. So that way, the public can be educated of what this contract is, where the funding's coming from, you know, whether it's important or not. So that's my thought on, and then maybe at that time, if we feel like we need to push further and create a committee, I also wouldn't be opposed to that.
Mr. Casey, you press your button again.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I guess what we just talked about the last couple of minutes is my point. We've already made an assumption that we're going to renew a contract with the Modesto City Fire Department. Is that correct? I mean, we're going to vote on a contract in a couple of weeks. We're going to talk about it and then we're going to vote on it in May of 2026. We're talking about a contract to contract to contract. I'm suggesting that it be opened up. Maybe there's another solution and maybe there's not. I don't know. I'm not, you know, I'm not a firefighter. I don't know. I've only been on the council for a short time. I don't know how all this works. But certainly, there could be. I've heard of other cities that have had contracts and then got out of that contract at renewal time and went a different way. But that's, but it sounds like that we're talking about a contract with the Modesto Fire Department. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me speak again.
Don't you want to say? Mr. Mayor, I understand Councilman Casey's question and stuff. We're looking at the contract because we've engaged in a five-year contract. Spent a lot of money into this contract to keep moving forward. As far as there are another game in town, the only other game in town is we re-initiate our fire department. Their Modesto fire covers the entire St. Louis County. Councilman Otero mentioned, you know, we can have a workshop beforehand. We can go ahead and do that. And if the numbers aren't penciling out then, then we can, you know, look at other options. And we can do that sometime in February or March of next year. But I, you know, we're saying renew the contract just like we renew a lot of contracts. It's just, you know, it's an assumption right now that we have to start talking because it's going to, it's a large contract. He is correct. But we have to look at all aspects of it and engage the Modesto Fire Department in those talks now to be able to negotiate what we need for the City of Series.
Councilmember Vera, Mr. Button again.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess going back where Otero's at, I do think that, looking at it beforehand, just because I do, one of the benefits of having the contract is we don't have to look at overtime. We don't have to look at, you know, retirement and all the other aspects that go into employment. And then if we were to withdraw from the contract and start our own like we did before, what are the costs that are involved? Because I know we have a deteriorating fire building now. And we have some other costs that are going to be, because, you know, there's still other costs in China. If, if this is something that, you know, the public is interested and we need to make sure we have the actual numbers to see if it's even reasonable or feasible. Because again, it is a large amount of money. But then we also don't deal with overtime, which we run into now and other departments when stuff happens and making sure that we can stay within a budget. Because with the contract, if people catch COVID or someone's out sick or there's a major fire like we had a few years ago, we had a back-to-back-to-back incidents over with, you know, the sulfur and then the recycling place catching on fire and all of those incidents. There was a lot of overtime and that didn't affect our budget, or at least our fire department budget. It might have affected our police budget because they had to block off the streets and do all that great stuff. And they're smiling at me because they know they were the first responders out there to make sure our fire department had no one driving down the street, as some of them do regardless of the flashing lights. So I think that's something that we do need to look at because having that fixed cost allows us to budget better. But if we can save money by doing something else, that's going to be just as reasonable, I think, is something we can at least look into, see if it's feasible for the community. And it's something we want to get into.
Mr. Mayor, so Councilwoman Vera makes a very valid point. It doesn't, you know, we're not paying the overtime costs and all that. But it also doesn't count all the recruitment costs, the workers' compensation costs, the sick days, the vacation days, and all the other things that we have to apply, you know, just for. And so that's, gives us a lot, saves us a lot of money and time also in making that happen. But, you know, we can bring both options back in March to say this is what's there. This is what it will cost. If you want to restart our department, this is the actual cost of it.
I think right now, what everybody's looking for is probably a workshop. I mean, I'd be interested in that. I don't want to speak for Mr. Casey. If Casey wants to stick with his request for a committee, or would you be interested in a workshop prior to us reviewing the contract?
Well, again, Mr. Mayor, sometimes my vocabulary is not as great as yours. The bottom line is, I just would like a lot of input before we make a decision. And the sooner we start that, the better it is. And I'm not suggesting here, right now, that we not do renew the contract with Modesto, because that's the only information I have. If I had other information, maybe I'd make a different decision.
Mr. Casey, would you be open for a workshop to have all that covered? Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure because this is his referral. So workshop, nods of heads left to right? No? Yes, with me? Okay. All right. We have one more? So this workshop, not committee? Moving on for number 11. Service group and student to lead, students to lead the flag salute requested by Councilmember Otero. Go ahead.
Thank you. So one of the things that I was thinking about on my first day sitting up here was the opportunity for the students around the community to come and lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I think it's great because they are our future. They are the future leaders. They are going to feel proud if they're standing up there, reading that Pledge of Allegiance in front of the public. In order to do this, I think it's possible that we could, each of us could look for students by reaching out to organizations. We can, the teachers are a great resource. There's churches. Or if we're just out, you know, maybe at an event and we come across some, a child who is interested, we can invite them to the council meeting to lead us in that. You know, with them being the future generation, it's going to give them an opportunity to lead up here. And it's going to encourage them to get involved later.
Open this item up to public. Members of the public, any comments or questions?
Gee, Akeley, Series. Serena, you had the nail on the head. There's probably something that's never, God, that thing is echoing. That hasn't been done in the, since I've been coming to city council meetings for years. And I kind of wonder if this is happening in schools, you know, some people are telling me they're not doing a pledge allegiance in schools anymore. I don't know where everybody's at, but this is America. And what you brought up, I think that's a great suggestion. Maybe it can inspire the kids to tell other kids to have some pride in America, which I think we've lost a little bit along the way through the years. I think it's a great idea. If you know if they're seeing a pledge allegiance every morning at the schools, let me know. Because I've been kind of disappointed because I've heard just the opposite, that they don't do that anymore. But good idea, Serena. Thank you.
Any other members?
Good evening, Council again, John Warren. I think that's an excellent suggestion. But I would further reach out, if you're going to have, or if we're going to have a child, a student, I would like to see a parent with that student here attending the meeting to do the flag. And I would also hope they wouldn't run out the door as soon as we sat down in our seats, which sometimes happens when people come for a photo op or whatever. They leave as soon as their little part of the meeting is over. And I can understand that. But going into high school, some of the students drive, they may want to come. But I would like to see a parent or a grandparent with them attending the meeting. And the purpose of that, of course, is to generate some interest in what does go on down here. Pledge of Allegiance and then watch and sit through a meeting and see what the city council actually does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom and there were no emails received.
I bring this item back. Councilmember Vera, your button is pressed.
Thank you, Mayor. Serena, I love the idea. I know last year at Concerts in the Park, we had the Boy Scouts come out and do the pledge at every single one they were present at. I also went through the community to try and some veterans to actually lead the pledge with the ones they were at. So I liked having the community involved. I do think it's great to have regardless of what age. I don't know if I think we should hold the parents hostage, but I would hope they would bring their kid. But I do think the idea is great. And I hopefully look forward to seeing a variety, not just Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts are welcome in high schools and youth and junior high and all of the age groups out here. Because I think it's important for them to get involved in governance as well. Thank you for the idea.
Thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor, actually?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So would this be a every meeting thing where we would have to find students? Or would we be partnering with the school board and school district, reaching out to them? And this is probably a sillier question, but if we had a student sign up, are we liable for them getting here and getting home, asking them to come into a pledge of allegiance if something were to happen to them? Also, I know I've got three little ones. Definitely don't think asking them to stay for the entire council meeting would be fair of us. Personally, I think my 10-year-old would love to be up here and say the pledge of allegiance. But I would feel bad for my wife chasing our two-year-old and our six-year-old for the entirety of the meeting if that was the case. So those are just a few questions I had.
And actually, it would be facilitated through the city clerk, right? Scheduling? Just as you schedule the pasture?
I think that's something that we would place in the staff report to outline the program.
So is this just a future thought?
Yeah. I think it's too soon to state how that would all look.
Right. Thank you. That's great. Go ahead, Councilmember.
I just want to get permission first. I like the idea, especially if there's someone available. And if there's not, I think, you know, we would be able to do it. If not, I'm sure we have some veterans in the community that are waving at me already volunteering. So I just think that if we can find someone, that would be great. And if not, we can just always have the mayor or someone in the community do it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we have plenty in the community that we can reach out to. Definitely, the school district is going to be probably our primary point of contact. But we all come across children in our community. I mean, Mayor is a coach, so there might be a football player or an entire team that wants to come lead the pledge of allegiance. wants to come lead the pledge of allegiance together. That's great, even an entire Boy Scout group. So there's a variety of ways that we can do it. But regardless, we just need to have our youth out there. It's going to get our community involved and I think it's really important.
Did I already go out to public? I did. Already went out to public. Sorry about that.
How about if the high school had somebody out of the civics class? Don't they have a class that wants to learn about civics? That would be perfect.
Sounds good.
And they probably don't know that they're welcome here.
Sure. I believe those, both high schools do have a civics club and they're both on the school board. So they attend school board meetings, they participate in those board meetings, and they do it through the school district.
So maybe you could let them know that they'd be welcome here also. Because let's face it, a football player really isn't going to get his jollies coming up here to do the pledge of allegiance.
For the most part, football players are very patriotic in my, my view. Okay. So now we're looking for consensus from the left to right. No? Yes? I'm saying yes. Yes, yes. Moving on to reports. I have no reports, but Rose Linda, I was waiting for that button. It's all yours, Councilmember.
Thank you. This last week, I was able to attend the youth leadership high school speech and art contest held over in Modesto with represented serious students, including Sirius, Turlock, Houston. It was an amazing event. These youth are just great. Some of them are just better speakers than I think I am and some amazing artwork. I do not have those capabilities, although I wish I did. But it was wonderful seeing our youth being engaged and I look forward to a lot of the things that they're going to do in the future. As for the S H A, I want to thank Leah for allowing me to sit on that committee. It was an amazing opportunity to see what our local county emergency shelters are doing and seeing exactly where they are, how many of them are actually financially stable, how many of them are not so stable and which services are being offered and how they're getting their funding. I think it's important to actually see what they're offering at the shelters. I learned a lot about the local agencies, their success and their failures, and I look forward to continuing my involvement. Our meeting is this week, so I don't have any updates for this meeting, but I look forward to things going on next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Otero.
So I know we have a lot of concerns with many roads across our cities, people speeding, there's accidents. But specifically, as a council member in District Three, I have received concerns about the speeding on East Gate. I just want to let everybody know that please don't hesitate to reach out to me if there is any other questions or concerns. I have requested some data about the number of accidents that have occurred on that road. There is going to be a speed trailer that's going to go out there, which is also helpful. I think that we're going to have to take a number of factors in to come up with a solution, but definitely community involvement is important. So feel free to reach out to me if there are any questions or concerns.
Any other councilmembers? Moving on, City Manager. Do we still online? Anything to report?
I don't, not this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody from the department? I only see one on my left side. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of the robust conversations we've had about community involvement, I wanted to let the community know that the San Osaslas County Consolidated Plan Survey is up and available. There's hard copies in the back. There's also a QR code in both English and Spanish. If you fill out a hard copy, you want to take it with you today, make sure you drop it back off at Community Development so I can return it to the county. It's also on our website. If you all recall, every year you review an annual action plan and those are details how we're going to then meet our con plan. And so the con plan happens every five years. We evaluate how to spend federal funds given to the home consortium, which includes Sirius, Houston, Newman, Oakdale, Patterson, Riverbank and Turlock, Waterford and the unincorporated parts of San Osaslas County. So those little action plans that you review every year culminate into this con plan, which is a five-year plan. And so we really need community input to take action in that plan. The county's goal is 400 participants across countywide, which may be a low bar, so let's try to have a lot of those participants come from Sirius. Again, it's on our website. There'll be hard copies. There have been hard copies on our counter. Those continue to be there. And then I also wanted to let you all know that we got our letter of conformance from H C D on our housing element. So we will get to bring that before you at the end of the month. It'll go to Planning Commission first. It is a very long document, over 400 pages. So if you could start reviewing it now, prepare some questions for the end of the month, it will come before you for hopefully adoption, which then we will, once we can submit an adoption resolution to H C D, we will have met Housing Element Law, which required us to actually pass a housing element by the end of 2023. So we are about a year and a few months behind. So we really want to get this element passed so we can be in conformance with state law and that will be before you again on March 24.
Thank you very much. That is it? Okay. We now adjourn this meeting for closed session. We now go to closed session for a conference with legal counsel regarding anticipation litigation, California Government Code 54956, for one potential case in addition to the conference with labor negotiators, California Code 54957. Agency designator representatives are City Manager Dee Douglas, Dunford and Human Resource Director Delilah Vasquez, employee organizations, our Sirius Police Office Association, first-line supervisors, confidential bargaining group, Laborers International Union of the North, America Launa, mid managers bargaining group and public safety managers, in addition to the conference regarding liability claims, California Government Code 5495695. Does anyone in the public would like to speak on regarding to this closed session? Thank you very much and we will return to report now. Meeting adjourned.
Welcome back everyone just left closed session nothing to report out.
Thank you.